Good evening, everybody. I'm just waiting for the last couple of members of the planning board to sign on. Deb's on. All right, who do we have for planning board members? I see Deb, I see myself, Jim. I see Dave. Bob's here too. And is Chris here? Oh, Chris can't make it. So, all right, it looks like we have a full complement. Again, remember, everybody, you are muted. It's star six to unmute you. That being said, time being four seventeen, I will call the meeting of the Free Town Planning Board to order. Before we get started with the meeting, I gotta... Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. So, before I get going on this meeting, I have to read this announcement. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Free Town Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town or Free Town's website, freetownma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public wishing to listen to the meeting or participate in the meeting or the public hearing may do so in the following manner: They may download Zoom and enter the meeting ID, which is on our agenda. You can also call Zoom. The number is on our agenda. And you can actually go to Zoom and enter the meeting ID and the passcode, and then you can do that all. No one person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we aren't able to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Free Town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Phew, that's a mouthful. Probably happen when we don't have to read that anymore. Okay, so first thing first, if you look at our agenda, we have six items. Seven, if you include the minutes. The first four items have all asked for continuances to our next meeting, which would be October 20 at six o'clock. And again, that'll be by Zoom, right? So, we're getting away from the four o'clock meeting, it's gonna go back to six. So, that being said, I will call the first four public hearings to order. That would be for Medesha Way, that's for TJA Solar on Chase Road, Mitch Kev, Commercial Development on Brayley, and also the Quarry Drive Bryant Hill LLC, the solar application for the CCA property. They've all asked for continuances. So, that being said, I'll entertain a motion to continue all those public hearings to October 20, six o'clock via Zoom.
Still moved.
Second. Motion's been made and supported. Roll call vote if there's no further discussion on the motion. Hearing none. Bob Joe's.
Aye.
Bob Joe's, aye. Jim Frey's?
Aye.
Jim Frey's, aye. Debbie Robbins?
Aye.
Debbie Robbins, aye. Kevin Damaris states, aye. It's unanimous. Okay, on to item number four. I'm sorry, item number six. The engineer for item number five is act that they be placed second on our agenda tonight. They have a conflict that they would be unable to get here for 4:15, so we're gonna honor that request and move right on to the last item on our agenda for public hearings. And that would be to start and open the public hearings for multiple special permits and site plan review. This is for the location up on Innovation Way. And that being said, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the rather lengthy public hearing notice.
Still moved.
Second. Motion made, supported. There's no further discussion. Roll call vote. Bob Joe's?
Aye.
Jim Frey's?
Aye.
Bob Joe's, aye. Jim Frey's, aye. Debbie Robbins?
Aye.
Debbie Robbins, aye. Kevin Damaris, aye. Okay, just stand by for half a second. And that's official now. Okay, perfect. Okay, so what we have here tonight is for an application for a special permit. We have three special permits, excuse me, four special permits and one site plan review. Two of them are for hours of operation, if you will. So, the first special permit would be for the illuminated sign outside of our normal hours, which is, they would like to have it lit between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Secondly, is an internally illuminated site, sign, excuse me, that requires a special permit from us, like the other ones here in town. They also need a special permit for their restaurant hours. Those will be outside of what's already allowed by right. And then, all fuel storage facilities, which in this case would be a gas station, are required to have a special permit. As we often do, and then, I'm sorry, the site plan review is triggered, I think, in a couple of instances, size of the actual establishment and the amount of vehicular traffic utilizing that. So, as we have done in the past, and how we often do it, is we concurrently hold the public hearings. So, when we're calling this public hearing back to order, I specifically call them back all four, all five public hearings for this one, this one application. So, that being said, this is a public hearing. If there are members from the public here, typically what we do is we allow the applicant to make a presentation. For those that would like to follow along, if you're viewing on Zoom, we have a screen share option, and the applicant may show their plans or information on that. Additionally, on the town's website, under the planning board, there are PDFs, files, if you will, of all the plans and the applications and supporting documentation there. So, if you wanna follow along that way. Once the applicant makes their presentation, I will open it up to the general public for questions. Just politely state your name and then ask the question through the chair. The applicant will answer the question unless it's a direct question for the planning board. This will not get decided tonight. Currently, it is out for engineering review, if I'm not mistaken. From the Partners Group, they've been working on it sometime now. So, this is typically when the applicant tells us about their project, and we get into some general concepts and questions, and then we move on from there. So, is the applicant here and ready to make a presentation?
We are, Mr. Chairman.
How are you, Tom?
I'm doing well. How about yourself?
Very good, considering. Thank you very much. So, did you have anybody else with you, Tom?
Yes, I do. Brendan Carr from Dupree Engineering, who's the site design engineer, is on as well. Nick Giacobi is on. He's a principal of the development company. I believe that maybe somebody on for traffic, Brendan, I don't know if you can identify them?
Yes, Paul Bannon from Beta Engineering should be on. If he's not, he should be joining very shortly.
Okay, so you've got at least somewhat of a full complement. I will tell you that typically, we send out what's called a Form L. We send plans to multiple departments and ask for any comments, questions, concerns. The only comment that we'd receive back on both the site plan and the special permits were a correction on the address. The assessors office has assigned an address of 30 through 36 Innovation Way for that property. So, going forward, if we can start utilizing those numbers rather than zero Innovation Way on future filings, I'm not gonna make you go back and change everything else, but if we do come up with new plan sets and that stuff like that, if we can change it to 30 through 36, that would be, that'd be great.
Certainly.
So, excellent. So, if there's no other questions before we get started, Tom, you and your crew can have the floor.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Attorney Thomas Klorin, I represent the applicant, which is Devcon Innovation Way LLC. As you stated, and I certainly won't read through exactly the whole, the entire public notice, as public hearing notice as well, so it's quite lengthy, but we're seeking from the board ultimately approval of our site plan review application, along with four special permits. I think many of you are familiar with the area in which this proposed development is located. It's situated sort of to the front of the Amazon Fulfillment Center on Innovation Way and just off of the exit eight ramp from 24. The site itself is roughly four and a half acres in size. It's located in a general use district, but also in the science and technology overlay district, which, when you're going through the bylaw with these two different zoning districts, some uses were allowed as a matter of right in the science, technology, and overlay districts, some were in the general use district, but we tried to cover all of our bases and make sure that we asked for all the necessary relief that was required. One thing I know that the chairman had mentioned was that this project is in the process of being reviewed by the board's consulting engineer, VPG, and that's accurate. This review actually started probably going back at least a couple of months, I think into July. We had submitted our review fee back in the summertime, just so we could get this process going, so that Brendan would be able to work with your consulting engineer and try to work out some of the kinks in the overall design of the project. So, I know there's been, I think, at least two review letters that Dupree has received on this matter, and Brendan's been working on making changes on those. I think there have been some recent comments that were submitted regarding traffic that I think we can address some of them orally tonight, but we can submit a written response to the comments that were raised by the consulting engineer. So, we think that we've done a pretty good job in responding to their comments and making sure that the plans comply with your zoning bylaw and regulations. We did submit a list of waivers yesterday. I think there were about 10 or 11 waivers that we'd be looking for from the bylaw, some of the design standards, and we can certainly go through those. I think maybe after, excuse me, after Brendan gives the overall site design presentation at the board. That pleases the board to do tonight. I think it's a good idea to at least talk about them this evening, so we can get some feeling in terms of how the board is leaning on their requests, so that we know whether or not we need to make some design changes in between now and what we anticipate to be the next hearing. Unless the board has any initial questions, I think what I'll do at this point is turn it over to Brendan, and he can walk the board through the plans itself in terms of what the overall layout's gonna be for the drive aisles, building placements, and parking.
All right. Good evening, Brendan Carr with Dupree Engineering. I can share the plans, but I think I need, the host needs to give me permission to be able to share. There we go.
Yeah, I think he just did. And again, for members of the public and the planning board, if you have the ability, go on our website, under the planning board, and it's got the meeting materials for October in the upper right-hand corner, and there's a PDF revised plan set, and I think that should help.
Okay, can everyone see the plans? Should be the cover sheet?
Yes.
So, okay, so I'll walk through the site design, existing, proposed, highlight some of the waivers we're requesting that Attorney Klorin referenced, but as was just stated, the site is right here, so it's just outlined in red. It's just south of the Innovation Way exit ramp. So, it's this long, it's about four and a half acres, wooded, fairly flat, drops off towards the north and towards Amazon. So, boarded by Innovation Way, and then, Amazon on kind of two sides here. And then, this parcel up to the north is part of the interchange. So, it's surrounded by Amazon, the interchange, and Innovation Way, and the vacant site across on Innovation Way. It's pretty much the last full parcel in Free Town before you get to the Fall River line here. And as I'm sure most of you are aware, it's on Innovation Way, which was constructed as part of the Fall River Redevelopment Authority Business Park as part of, you know, with the interchange improvements to kind of spur development on both sides of the exit here. So, I'll walk through the kind of site layout, utilities, stormwater, all that. So, what we're proposing here, like I said, this is the site outline, so Innovation Way is at the bottom of the screen here. North is to the right. Proposing a development consisting of three buildings. So, working left to right here, we have, proposing a 6,400 square foot gas convenience store with the drive-through with a coffee shop component. The middle building here is a 3,500 square foot restaurant. And then, on the kind of opposite side of the main access here is another building. It's a 6,900 square foot retail restaurant, kind of mixed use, might have multiple tenants, might have two to four tenants type of layout here. And we've shown a drive-through on that too, just, you know, in our initial conversations with town staff. Wanted to leave flexibility to maybe have a drive-through on each building. Probably won't end up with a drive-through on each building, but we've kind of done a full development plan that what it would look like if each building did end up with a drive-through. You know, with regards to the drive-through, we've shown the required stacking behind the menu boards at each drive-through and also bypass lanes to kind of facilitate the site circulation. So, those are the buildings, you know, as you can see, there's, site would be accessed off of Innovation Way with two curb cuts. This is the northern one. This would be a full in, so you'd be able to pull in from either direction on Innovation Way. But with coordinating with DOT, since this is a state road, we are limiting left turns out of this, so you'd only be able to take a right turn out. And that's just because of the proximity to the, I'm sorry, proximity to the interchange and the ramps. We didn't want a left turn out of here, and it also kind of helps with our truck circulation through the site. So, with this left building being the gas convenience, it has two different kind of fueling areas. This one canopy over here with the five pumps, that would be for diesel for trucks. And then, the one in front would be your kind of consumer, regular, like a typical gas station. So, it's kind of a combo to keep the truck traffic in the, you know, normal car traffic separate, but also, it kind of facilitates that loop, that truck loop through the site. So, we've done some, you know, turning analysis, trucks entering the site from both directions would come in here, go around the buildings, and then be able to tee up into these these fueling islands, and then out this. Whether they were going south, we anticipate majority of the traffic would be going north on Innovation Way, the truck traffic, so they'd be able to leave there. What else? You know, we've proposed adequate parking per the town's bylaws and, you know, past developments that we've done with this type of mixed use. The parking meets the town zoning requirements. I think we're actually a few spaces over. We, the requirement for all three uses is 69 spaces. We're proposing 77 spaces. I'll flip to the stormwater and the utility plan here. Sewer and water are, we're proposing connections, actually, I'll go to the next plan for that, proposing connections within Innovation Way. So, the sewer and water systems for the site are actually Fall River Public Sewer and Water, so we've been coordinating with them throughout the design process. Basically, what they've told us is, in concepts, you know, they have the capacity, they have the ability to service the site. Once we get our site approvals, and, you know, we do the formal applications, we submitted plans to them for review, but the formal applications for service are done at the time of construction. So, sewer, each building would have a pump, since the site does sit a little bit lower than than the roadway here. That would, a little lag there, sorry, that would pump up to a gravity system that would make a sewer connection here. And then, water, we'd have a similar connection to that main that's in Innovation Way, and that's right here in the center of the site here. It's actually, that water main is actually, there's an existing stub to the site that we'd be utilizing. Stormwater, the site would be would be serviced by, obviously, collecting, using catch basins. One of the waivers we're actually asking for is to utilize an inline catch basin, a catch basin connection. The town requirement is offline. So, that just means a catch basin needs to go to a manhole. So, if you picture, kind of easiest way to picture it is on a subdivision road or a roadway, you have your main trunk line of drainage structures going down the center of your road with manhole and pipe, and then the catch basins kind of come into those manholes. What we're proposing is catch basin, a catch basin, and some of the alignments here. And the reason we're asking for that waiver is because we're not able credit for the catch basin, the deep subcatch basin, the downstream system. So, those catch basins discharge to underground sand filters and infiltration systems that control the peak runoff, meet the recharge requirements, meet the TSS and water quality requirements, meet all the mass stormwater standards. But that downstream system meets the TSS removal calculation. So, we, you know, as part of that, the requirement is 80% TSS removal for the different sections on the site. We're currently at 90 and 93% removal. And adding that offline configuration of catch basins would boost our removal efficiencies approximately 1 to 3%, and just for the sheer cost of that, adding a, basically, you're adding another manhole for every catch basin. It's probably about, in the neighborhood of an $80,000 to $100,000 addition to get that 1 to 3% additional TSS removal. So, that's one of the waiver requests. I just wanted to point it out while I was walking through the drainage, because it's one of the waiver requests we've been discussing with the peer reviewer. But like I said, the site mainly uses, will entirely uses underground systems that infiltrate the water and then discharge it to the north here. So, the site, the under existing additions, the majority of the stormwater flows kind of towards the north. You can see it's fairly flat up in here, and this kind of peaks off down towards, there's a wetland system offsite here. But we're matching those characteristics with sending the flow that way and meeting pre-development rates. In general, that's kind of the site layout. We did mention, we have been going through two to three rounds of comments with the town's peer reviewer. We're wrapping up a final submission, hopefully, later this week, that we feel we're addressing all their comments other than the waivers that we are requesting that we can get into shortly. But unless there's any questions on kind of the site layout, stormwater, utility stuff, I can ask the traffic engineer to speak quickly, because I know he has a hearing at five o'clock that he has to leave for, so maybe he can present his, and then we can get back to questions.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll just make one comment relative to water. We did get a comment on the Form L from the fire department, and it says that the project must be in compliance with 527 CMR-1, Chapter 18, for fire department access and water supply. And I don't see any hydrants on site. So, maybe...
We could, we can definitely talk about that. I believe there's a fire hydrant right out here. I can, yeah, right here, there's a fire hydrant directly in front of the site here, but if another hydrant is requested on site, we could accommodate that.
All right, I don't... Okay, that's fine. I see the hydrant out front. That's a road hydrant that was there, right?
Correct, yep.
And Brendan, I don't wanna, I don't know that there's a hydrant on that side of the road. My water line's on the other side, and all the hydrants are on the opposite side.
Okay, I can confirm whether this is a...
Yep. That's fine. So, go ahead, and we'll move on to your traffic guy, and obviously, this isn't getting solved tonight. So, it just, I just see that, if we don't have a hydrant over there, then what's gonna end up happening is you'll have a fire department hook into a hydrant on one side of Innovation Way and running hoses across and essentially shutting down Innovation Way, so...
Kevin, that is, we are proposing, that is a proposed hydrant.
That's the proposed hydrant, thank you.
Yep, sorry, yep, just had to check right here. Shows a little better on this plan. There is a proposed hydrant right there.
Okay. Go ahead, traffic guy.
Paul? Hi, everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Paul Bannon. I'm a senior transportation engineer, associated Beta Group in Lincoln, Rhode Island. We were retained by the owner to complete a traffic impact study for the project. I'll just briefly go through our overall findings as we're going through the process, and we'll be addressing review comments that have been received. But generally, to complete the project, we conducted a review of the site plans that were developed by Dupree to coordinate the design of the access and circulation and to ensure that safe access and ingress to the property is provided. We conducted a site visits different times of day, days of the week, to observe traffic conditions. We inventoried the project area for land use, existing roadway conditions, horizontal, vertical geometry of roadway, and site distances along the roadway, specifically at a proposed driveways. We reviewed record traffic information. We also obtained both ATR, automatic traffic, 24-hour data, and turning movement counts at the interchange with 24 at Innovation Way. We reviewed accident data from Mass Department of Transportation to determine if there are any safety concerns in the project area. Then, we developed trip estimates for the commercial plaza, as it was described by Brendan, including the gas convenience, fast food, drive-throughs, and a small retail department. And then, we assessed the safety and operations of that future condition. As Brendan indicated, the site's located on Innovation Way within the Fall River Free Town Industrial Park. Along our property frontage, the roadways has four travel lanes, 56 feet wide with sidewalks within the immediate area. As Brendan indicated, we're proposing two driveways, but the northern driveway is gonna be limited. We recommended it be limited to a right turn exit out, specifically because the, its proximity to the interchange and southbound traffic from the interchange, they, it transitions from three to two lanes as you're heading south approaching our property. south approaching our property. So that's in the weave or merge area of innovation way. So we wanted to simplify the driveway. And as Brendan indicated, it also works best with circulation for our, our trucks. The review of the driveways relative to site lines, we did a radar speed study, determined the actual travel speeds or design speeds for the roadway. The driveways shall provide the minimum or greater than the minimum requirements for safe stopping site distance. So safe and adequate access can be provided. The trips associate, well, the, the roadway itself is a very low volume roadway today. It services only a few businesses within the park. Daily traffic is only less than, it's less than 5,000 vehicles per day. It's roughly 3,500. So hourly traffic is, is also very low. The looking at the future condition, we looked at trips for the uses, commercial uses proposed. These commercial uses typically 40 to 60% of the trips associated with this, these uses are what we call pass-by trips, so trips that will already be on the, the local roadway or innovation way until such time that the long-term build out of the, of the park is, is realized. The, you know, trips associated that we've estimated based on, just on the square footage of the buildings, the number of pumps would generate more traffic in an hour than it's, that's presently on the road. So, but looking at, to be conservative, you know, we had to use those numbers. And that's what we're, one of the biggest items, the peer reviewer had and will work out those numbers relative to anticipated trips because, you know, you can't generate more trips than are already on, on the roadway. If, if that's where your traffic is being, most of your traffic is associated with. So we'll be working with the review engineer to finalize our numbers, but, and adjust our numbers accordingly. But based on the low volumes of traffic on the road today and estimated in the future, we included an, an analysis of the interchange ramps and intersections and they will operate efficiently in the near term and long term based upon the disuse and projected future peaks. There any questions I'd be glad to, to answer?
I, I, I don't have any questions. It sounds like it was a, a, a very thorough review. The good part is we have environmental partners group and their traffic people that I'm sure are looking through this and they're gonna do what they do. So I'm sure we'll be receiving comment if we haven't already.
Yes, we, we've received comments and, and they're in agreement with much of what we've done. As I indicated, it's the trip numbers that are tricky on this project just because of where it is and the size of the, of the uses that we're proposing.
Yeah.
Relative to trip gen.
Okay. Does anybody else on the board have a question?
I have a quick question. You're going to only, you're going to only go a right hand, a right hand turn out of the property, correct?
Out of the northern driveway. The southern driveway is a full access egress. But because it's the northern driveway, that end of the property is just beyond the curve from the interchange. And the innovation way is transitioning from three to two lanes at that point with a lot going on. We just didn't want people taking a left at that location.
When, when the trucks leave the property, where do you think they're going to go to get on the highway?
They will go back to the left from the southern driveway. And that's right in line with the diesel pump stations at, at the southern end of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Looks like you're going to be able to make your five o'clock.
Thank you very much. Have an easy evening.
You, you as well. Thank you. Brandon?
Um, so is, are there any questions on the, the site layout, utility stormwater? Or Tom, I don't know if we want to walk through the waivers requests now or?
I, I had a quick question about the layout. Now you're showing a layout for the three buildings. It was my understanding that you were phasing this and how was that, how are you doing that in this process? Are you applying progress permits at once? How is that working?
Um, so basically from the initial conversations with, you know, some of the town staff, we had, we were asked to show like the full build out of development. But if it was phased, the initial phase would consist of the, the first two buildings. So the gas convenience and the restaurant, it would basically be from, you know, this main entrance south. This is what we're viewing as a potential, you know, staggered phase, maybe down the road, not, you know, not 10 years down the road, but a year or two down the road. But the immediate construction would be the gas station, this pad in this, you know, this area of the site here. That's why we kind of designed this third building, the retail restaurant pad to be almost an add-on. But, you know, the majority of the stormwater over here would have to be constructed as phase one. So this area would have to be cleared and rough graded. Just maybe the parking and the building and the improvements above ground wouldn't be immediately constructed.
What improvements would you do? Would you leave it gravel? Would you chip seal it? Would you asphalt it all now and be done with that? So literally just cut into the asphalt? How would you go about?
It would really be kind of determined on any, you know, if a tenant was found for this building. If there was a tenant interested, you know, you could see the whole thing get constructed to final grade to construction with, you know, one tenant and have the rest of the building occupy, I mean, unoccupied. The minimum that would have to be constructed would be, you know, ability to construct the underground improvement, uh, stormwater system. So we could grass that side of the site, bring it to final grade and loom and seed it. And that could be removed later, or we could leave it at subbase basically with the drainage and if, if, you know, with that drainage installed.
So you don't have a specific plan as of yet though?
Um, it would really depend on kind of the market at that point. So if, you know, if there was no interest in this building, I could see this all being constructed with these undergrounds and then just loom and seeded and it would remain grass at that point. That would be if, but if there was interest, the building would eventually be built within the next few months, you might see it brought to subgrade.
I think Mr. Jones, I mean, it's the intention and hope of, of the applicant to be able to develop the site fully and as quickly as possible. One of the benefits to them when they're trying to market it to a potential tenant is to have the project fully permitted. And in that way they can say, okay, you know, there are no delays in terms of going to the town, getting, you know, a site plan review application approved or a special permit approved. They can go to a particular tenant and say, look, we're ready to go. You know, we just need to apply for a building permit. So the hope would be is to develop it all at once. But obviously, you know, by the time they, we get through this process and we're coming on winter, depending upon their construction timeline, you know, the market climate may have changed. But I, I can tell you it's their hope to develop it all at once, but that just may not be the reality once, uh, once they get to that point.
And to speak from a construction, uh, sequencing and permitting side of things, for, because of the mass stormwater regulations, if this, you know, if immediately the whole site would be cleared, this would be disturbed. If no construction activity was anticipated in the near future, this, that area would have to be stabilized to, you know, the standards of the mass stormwater handbook, which would most likely be temporary seeding. So, you know, it can't just sit as a construction zone. If there's no activity going, it would have to be stabilized.
Right. Cause my, my, one of my chief concerns was dust mitigation. If you left that as just a gravel pad out there, I think the dust mitigation in the wintertime would be, would be difficult, especially close proximity to the highway and you got residences across from the highway.
Correct. Yep. And especially, you know, prior to the winter, it would have to be stabilized. If it wasn't anticipated, that construction would go through the winter.
Thank you.
If, if there's no further questions, if you please the board, we, we could run through the, the waiver list.
Kevin, you want? Is the chairman still on the board? I'm not prepared. Well, as vice chair wanted to go ahead and give us the
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
All right. Wow, I had to put myself on mute. I didn't want, uh, because I was moving around. I'm sorry. So yeah, my only concern with the waivers is if we're still going back and forth with EPG, do you anticipate that there's going to be more waivers or is it?
I think
How do you stand with that?
I think this waiver list, and that's why we, we didn't submit it until, till yesterday because we were waiting on the back and forth to see where we ultimately ended up with, with EPG and the design. I think at this point, the, the waiver list, we're pretty comfortable. This is going to be the list that, this is going to be our final list.
Okay.
I like to say I promised you that, but, but I, I'm pretty confident that it's going to be.
Okay. So I, uh, everybody
I think so. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, we have a, we have a list of the waivers and typically, uh, I know we have EPG, I think Adam is on. And so Adam, I'm going to expect that if you have comment on any of these, that you would interject if you would, okay?
Hi Kevin, yeah, Adam Cram with EP. Uh, yes, I'll interject if I've got comments.
Excellent. Thank you. So if you want to, go ahead and we'll start with the
Great. So, so the first, first one, section 11.20 F7 and 1121 BM, um, there's a requirement that the menu boards be submitted with the filing and we're seeking a waiver of that at this point because we don't know exactly what these menu boards are going to look like. We don't know who the end user or a tenant's going to be for these potential pads, well, for these pad sites. So we're asking that the menu boards be submitted as part of the building permit application. Again, just because we wouldn't be able to do that right now, given the uncertainty in terms of exactly who the tenants are going to be. We do know that in the gas, in the gas station, there will be a Dunkin' Donuts. So I mean, we, we do know that one of the menu boards will be for the Dunkin' Donuts. But again, we were asking that we could submit that menu board at the building permit application time.
Okay. And that's, that's, um, that's more specific to the drive-through bylaw? Or is that, is that a requirement through us? That's not a requirement through our site plan. So that's got to be a, a, a waiver from the sign bylaw?
One second, Mr. Chairman. Those two sections in your bylaw.
I thought that was under the site plan section.
That's, that's
So a ma, a menu board is under our site plan review section. Okay.
And it, it's just, it's not the standards for the design of the menu board. It's just the submission of the plans at this time.
I see. Okay. All right. All right. So again, and when you're talking menu boards, are we talking the exterior menu boards for the drive-through? Or are we talking interior menu boards?
The exterior.
Exterior. I apologize.
That's what I thought. Okay. All right. All right. So yeah, again, it might be that when we get to, you know, having to look at approval or denial, that if, if that's a waiver request, then you may get stuck with, okay, but the sign can't be ex, you know, there may be some size requirements or something along those lines.
I think the, but we can, we can, we can move forward now on, on, on to the next one.
Next one is section 11.31 I-12, which deals with the driveway width. The, the requirement is that the points of ingress and egress be 24 feet wide. We're proposing a wider turning radius, one being 30 feet, which I believe is the southerly ingress, egress and 35 feet, which I believe is the northerly point of ingress and egress. We just think that having a, a wider points for access and exiting the property is more conducive to the use and traffic flow and will allow easy, easier maneuverability for trucks and, and, and regular passenger vehicles coming in and out of the site.
Yeah, this isn't the first time we've been approached with that and have asked for the wide. So I, I understand exactly. We've had to be safe than, than sticklers for the 24 foot. So. All right. What's the next sec, uh, one?
11.21 B. It, it's a requirement that drives, drive-throughs be delineated with curbing. And then we're asking that it be allowed via striping on the pavement.
And again, that's, that's more towards the rear of the buildings, the sides. You can see that they're delineated with curbing, but that would be if the letter of the law of the requirement was that this would be curbed here. And we wanted to do that with striping just because it's, it's easier for maintenance, for truck circulation, for snow plowing, things like that.
Okay.
The, the next section is 11.31 K. It deals with a, or requires a 40-foot wide side landscape buffer. And in certain areas, we have a buffer, I think that goes down to as, as close as five feet in certain areas.
Yeah. So the majority, this, the northern property line here, we meet the 40, uh, almost meet the 40 foot. It's at like 37, 38 here. On the southern here, you can see this is, I don't know if you can see it, but this line right here is the 40 foot side in rear landscape. So we're at, I think about 36 on this, but the majority of it is back towards the areas facing Amazon that we're requesting for a smaller setback. And at the tightest point, there's a retaining wall in the rear here. The tightest point would be five feet and that's directly adjacent. This is Amazon's driveway right here. So that's directly adjacent to Amazon.
Okay.
Section 1131 K requires head-to-head parking to have a 10-foot landscape median strip between it. We're proposing there'll be no median street, no median strip in a head-to-head roll parking located in front of the proposed restaurant area.
And that's this area right here, these 22 parking spaces. And the requirement would be that instead of having them head-to-head like this, there would be a 10-foot landscape island between them.
Okay.
Section 2.3.2.3. R. Kevin, you might be able to explain this better. There's a town pavement section and, and we're requesting a waiver to allow the use of a pavement section designed specifically for the site.
Yeah. So, okay. Go ahead, Kevin.
No, no, no. Go, go ahead, Brandon.
Um, so that's just asking for the town has a standard pavement section, you know, thickness of asphalt and subbase that they require on their town roads. And we would just ask that, um, you know, when we do a geotechnical analysis of the site, that the geotechnical engineer designs a specific pavement cross-section for this site based on the underlying soils and the, the traffic anticipated on the site. And we can submit that for approval. But that would, you know, it would be a site specific instead of meeting the kind of more general town specification.
Kevin, I misspoke. I meant to say Brandon can explain it, not, not you.
No, no, listen, I was just getting, I was writing out the bill to send to you guys. No, um, that's, that's not atypical. We've had that in the past. So as long, and again, you, you know, it's a fine line. This is site plan review. So it's, uh, there's an inherent approval so long as we get kind of what we're looking for. And, uh, you know, I'm not going to rack my brain too much if you guys don't want to build it the best. But at the same time, there is a certain level of construction that we would expect if we're going to have our names on it, right? So I would say at the end of the day, if, if that's something that you can show to EPG that for its intended use, this is sufficient construction, uh, then I, I would imagine what we've done in the past is we would, you know, typically be in favor of a waiver request.
Quick question. You, you do plan on having the geo, geo logistics done prior to and an asphalt number prior to final submittal and approval, I should say, not submittal, but approval, correct? and an asphalt number prior to final submittal and approval, I should say, not submittal, but approval, correct?
Um, of the site plan, we were, no, we were anticipating that we could submit that prior to starting construction activities. That's what the way, that's what we were asking for anyways.
So, you were asking to have the, approve that you could change the, the asphalt thickness now and just have final sign-off at permitting? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and typically, I mean, it being a private development, a lot of towns, their standard roadway specification doesn't exactly apply. Honestly, in this instance, our asphalt thicknesses and base courses might actually be thicker than a, a town spec just because of the kind of truck nature of the traffic through most of the site.
I would expect that. What amount of truck traffic are you going to have there? Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, the anticipation would be, and this kind of ties to one of the other items we discussed about the retaining wall is that we would provide that spec to the town and to their, you know, EPG prior to starting construction.
Okay.
Next one, section 2B4E and section 2C7 requires the applicant to complete a noise assessment and we're asking for a waiver. Given the location of this property, we think that it's, it's, you know, it, it's fairly isolated from any kind of significant, certainly residential development. You know, it sits off of the highway, off of the, the exit ramp onto Innovation Way in front of the Amazon fulfillment system, fulfillment center. And given the proposed use, we'd be asking for a waiver. We didn't think that a noise assessment would be necessary in this instance.
So, let me ask you this, Tom. Would, would you be able to provide us with any kind of information relative to the expected? I understand you can't give us a, a specific, right? Because if five tractor trailers are there at one time backing up, obviously, that's going to have a different noise level. I mean, we, so, I, I think there's a, there's a noise component with the, the menu boards too, if you will, or the drive-through. It can't be, I don't think it can be all that loud for that too. So, is there any other, like, like, we typically are going to have external fans for coolers or da-da-da-da-da. They typically have, you know, but at, at a distance of the, the noises. If, if we can have something that so that we don't approve this and we waive it, next thing you know, you guys are up there lighting off, off bombs, right? I mean, I know I'm using hyperbole here, but.
Yeah, I understand.
All right. Okay.
I understand the point, certainly. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that in between now and the next hearing.
Excellent. Thank you.
Section, section 4D2D requires concrete headwall at the drainage outfalls. Applicants asking for a waiver to allow for flare-end section at the drainage outfalls. Brandon, you want to explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so the next three are drainage-related. So, I can kind of handle those. Just trying to find the right plane here. So, the town requirement is that we have this one outfall. So, basically, as I discussed, all the stormwater kind of goes through the site and then the majority of it ends up in one, in these underground systems down here. And then there's two outfalls on the northern end of the site here, one here and one here. And the town requirement is that those outfalls are a concrete headwall. So, a wall with a pipe, the hole sticking out of it. And we're asking just to propose flared end sections, which are a typical application for something like this.
Typically, what we've done in the past is we've referred to environmental partners group on that. And if, if they look at it and they take no exception, typically, we are in agreement with that. So, I would say try to work that out with EPG if we're, or if, Adam, if you have any comments on that and you're willing to talk about it now, that's fine. If not.
Yeah, we can, yeah, I mean, we've talked about it and we don't have a strong objection to it.
Okay. What's the next one?
Next one requires that all pipe be, to be reinforced concrete. The applicant's asking for a waiver to allow HDP E-pipe. And this is specifically for drains.
Correct. This is for the drainage pipe. So, the town requirement is reinforced concrete and we're proposing HDP, which is ADS, you know, plastic piping. I don't want to speak for Adam, but I think in his latest comment letter, they had no objection to that.
That's correct. Yeah, we, as long as there's sufficient cover, yep.
Yeah, I, Adam, thank you. I was, I was just about to say that typically, we allow it so long as it can be proven out that there's going to be sufficient cover for it. So. Okay, what's the next one?
Last comment. This is something that, that Brandon had touched upon earlier. It's section 4D11U. The section doesn't allow for catch basin, to catch basin connections and we're asking for a waiver to allow for this catch basin, the catch basin connections. Again, as Brandon had explained earlier, I think we meet the state standards. I believe the requirement for, I forget the exact name of the contaminants, but, but the, I think it's 80%. I think we're at, in one spot, 90% and another spot, about 93 or 94%. If we did, if we follow the town's bylaw, I think it'll only make an improvement of about 1 to 3%, which I would suggest is negligible. The cost to the applicant, if, if we don't get this waiver is substantial and we were talking somewhere in the neighborhood of around $100,000. So, we'd be asking for a waiver on, on this provision.
Yeah, and I.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna, I, I'm not sure if everyone knows exactly what we're asking for there, but I, I'm sure, Adam, we've had a lot of discussion about this one. So, he'll chime in when I'm done. But basically, what we're saying is, you know, here we have, our drainage pipe goes, there's a catch basin there, catch basin there, a drainage pipe continues through the, the catch basin. So, the town requirement is that this structure would be changed to a manhole and then the catch basin would be offline. So, there would be no water flowing through that catch basin. And it would be offset to the side here. Now, there's a, you know, a few reasons why, you know, that is a, you know, a standard in some places, you know, in the, in the town standard. And there's obviously added treatment for that. We did out the calculations and basically the main component that this ties into with relation to the drainage design is TSS removal, which is total suspended solids removal. So, that's the removal of your sand, your grit, your debris, things like that that are in the stormwater. So, the treatment chain that we're proposing is, and I'm just bring, going to bring it up here so I say it correctly. This is a standard mass DP spreadsheet that you have to fill out for all your different treatment chains. So, there's two different treatment chains on this, on this site and this one in particular. So, the first component is, and this is all downstream of the catch basin collection system. So, when it goes through that, the catch basins and the pipes and it gets conveyed to this treatment chain. So, it consists of an oil grit separator, which is an oil-water separator, which is a kind of a chamber similar to a septic tank in some ways, but it allows oil to float up. It has, it's a tank with baffles. It allows oil to float up to the top, grit to fall down to the bottom, the cleaner water flows through the middle. Where it says proprietary device, that is, it's called the downstream defender, which is, it's another structure that takes the water in it. It's a hydro, it's called a hydrological separator and basically swirls the water and creates a whirlpool. And it force, again, it forces the solids down and the oils up. And then it goes into this underground sand filters, which are the underground infiltration systems. They have a sand layer but below them. So, the water filters through that sand and then into the ground. So, with that treatment chain, as we have it designed, provides 93% TSS removal. The state requirement is 80%. There's another, you know, our other kind of treatment chain with these areas of the site that don't go through the oil grit separator. So, the oil grit separator is mainly for the areas that, the fueling areas around the canopies, in front of the convenience store, things like that, things that are considered what they call a lupo, which is a land use with higher potential pollutant loading. So, the state has certain uses that it elevates the required treatment. So, in those areas, we're at 93% TSS removal and in the other areas, we're at 90%. Like I said, the town, I mean, the state requirement is 80%. And I did the same, using the same sheet, I did the same calculation by adding, basically, if you read the state stormwater regs, if you use an offline catch basin configuration, you're allowed to gain 25% TSS removal in that first chain. And since these, these aren't just chopping all at the same number, they're compounded on each other. If you added that to the start of each treatment chain, you can see it bumps it from 93 to 94 and from 90 to 93. So, that's what Tom has been kind of alluded to when, you know, he introduced the waiver. So, that's kind of where, you know, our justification and what we're requesting.
Okay, well, that seems to be the biggest one of, or at least of your concern right now. So, Adam, this is where we're going to rely, or at least I want to rely on your expertise. I know why we do it as a town. I know why we do it in roads that we're going to accept. I think it's not only is it a treatment component, but there's a ease of maintenance component. When you're talking about potentially, you know, thousands of feet long storm systems. Well, let's, let's start with, do you take exceptions to anything that Brandon said?
I mean, we generally view it as a requirement for all projects in Massachusetts and it's reinforced by your local bylaws. So, we, we just don't see that as something that's at all a common practice, even on private commercial site development.
Okay. All right.
So, I mean, we could get into it a little more detail, but I mean, essentially, it's, you know, it's, there's a, you've got the local requirement, you've got the state handbook, you know, just notes that, you know, it's typical guideline is that it should be an offline device. And then it, you know, just thinking about it, you know, you're, whenever you have a storm, any sediment that's, that's in any of these basins are going to get kicked up and thrown towards the downstream units. And ultimately, you've got a system that you're not really seeing. So, it might be the sort of thing that comes out of sight, out of mind. And, you know, we also have other comments about whether, you know, it, it looks like water is going to be backing up into the system a little bit at various times. And it's not clear that the downstream systems have been, downstream defender systems have been certified to remove particles when they've got water coming into them from both ends, basically.
All right. So, what it sounds like to me, and I, and I know the applicant would be, would love for an answer tonight, but I, I think it sounds like to me that there needs, there's a little bit of more back and forth that needs to go on. We're not being asked to, yeah, go ahead.
Well, we've, I mean, Brandon, Scott and I had a discussion in mid-July, I believe, after our first letter about this very subject. And I'm not sure that anyone's opinions have really changed much on this.
So, what you're saying is that it's EPG's position that the requirement be held and that they actually put the DMHs in?
That's what we would strongly recommend, yes.
Okay. Well, Brandon and Tom and everyone else, I think you've heard. I don't want to answer for the board. If you want some sort of vote from the board tonight, I think we can certainly do that to give you direction.
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, on that, I don't think we need a vote on that tonight based on what we're hearing from EPG. But we would like to maybe some additional time in between now and the next meeting. And Brandon, I don't know if Brandon is prepared to speak on this right now or maybe we can at the next hearing. But it's our understanding that there have been other developments in town that have been allowed to construct their drainage in a fashion.
Yeah, that.
Where proposed.
That, that, that might have been the case. And to be honest with you, I don't know how much we want to go down that road because I don't know when things were permitted, when, you know, what regulations were in place. And I, I get what you're saying. It's your argument against theirs and then it's our job to, to split the difference. And in, in all fairness, I think oftentimes we do defer to environmental partners. So, I just, I think in fairness, I needed to say that. So, I'll, I'll allow you to get you some more information and try to come up with something better for next time or, or give you more time to work with EPG if you think. If I could go back to the, the first one that you talked about.
Yes.
And that was, that was, that was the, the menu boards. Okay?
Yes.
And, all right. And, and, and what I've done is I've gone through our, our bylaws. And one of that, the first one, 11.20, that's our sign bylaw. Basically, if, that, that section seven basically gives you the parameters by which you have an allowed sign. Right? Not one and one such sign per drive-through, 25-foot setback in property lines, 30-square foot maximum area. I don't see anywhere on there where it says that we have to have that we need, we need to see the actual picture of the sign. Okay? So, I, you should probably go back and look. And then the next part is the, that's the drive-through bylaw. And again, it says 21B. And the menu boards shall be a maximum of 30 square feet with a maximum height of six feet and shall face away from the street. They shall be screened from all public view. And that, and that echoes what was in the, in the actual sign bylaw.
The sign bylaw, sorry.
Right. So, neither one of those is in the site plan review. That's why I always say, one's in the drive-through bylaw and the first one would be in the sign bylaw. What it basically, and, and, and tell me where I'm wrong. I'm reading it. It says, this is the kind of sign that you can have. It says, drive-through pickup may be allowed under the following restrictions. So, if you're asking that the plans not be submitted to us until the building permit, I don't know how we give you a drive-through permit.
Well, if.
If you, if you, if you agree that the sign will meet all those requirements, then it looks like you would get it by right with, with the, with the approval of the drive-through.
Right. If this, if the sign doesn't comply with that, then I, I don't think this board could, could, could grant a waiver. I think that's a variance. But we, we're just asking if we, if, if you're saying that as long as our sign complies with the requirements that are in that bylaw, then we don't need to submit them. Or we submit them as part of the building permit application and we're fine with that.
Yeah, and.
Well, you would have, you'd have to submit it as part of the building permit application. But what I'm saying is, is the waiver, it looks like, the waiver, it looks like you're, you're actually waiving the requirement to, to show us what the menu boards look like. And, and I guess what I'm saying is, if you have a menu board that meets that, that, so if you show us on the plans where it is, if you agree that it's not going to be more than 30 square foot, I don't think we, you know, with a maximum height of six feet and won't be seen and, and all that other stuff, then it, it falls in line. And this is a bylaw. So, we can't, we can't issue a waiver on the bylaw.
Right. So, so perhaps we don't, perhaps that waiver doesn't need to be included in the waiver list then. As long as, I, I guess my point is, is we don't know exactly what the sign is, that the menu boards are going to look like. But if the menu boards comport with the requirements in the bylaw, we submit those plans at the time of our building permit application and we're okay.
Yeah, I think, I think at the end of the day, if we're going to give you a sign, you know, and these, and these two are not what you're coming in for a special permit for the sign, not a standalone sign, right? The internally illuminated standalone sign, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
So, these would be almost a by right so long as you met that requirement. So, if there was a statement on the plan that shows menu board location and then a note on that that states the menu board will meet all of the requirements as laid out in section 11.20 F7 or 11.21 BM, whatever. Then I think that, because I don't care what color it is or what it says or what the font is, none of that makes the hill of beans to me. What I do care is that it's not over. What I do care is that it's not overly big and it meets our sign bylaw requirements and that it's not all that loud, which we have, the, the requirements are, are in the, the bylaw. So I, I, I.
I think we can remove that waiver, a point.
Yep, all right.
As, as a point, more to your point, Kevin, that it still has to be, it's site plan review, so it still has to show a location. If it, if it's conforming, it's by right, then it doesn't need, it doesn't need a waiver, it doesn't need a permit, well, it needs a permit, but it doesn't need to be waived. It's, you list by right use, it's going to conform to the size and all of that. The location still has to be on the site plan review, but that's it.
There it is. We'll, we'll make, we'll make that notation on the, on the plan.
Excellent, excellent.
Hey, Tom, this is, this is Nick Giacobi, I'm the, I'm the developer, owner, operator. I wanted to go, kind of go back in touch base on the, the catch basin conversation. I was going back and forth. I know, we've been going back and forth with the EPG and Brandon has since, since July. And I don't know how much more info is, is kind of going to be, you know, transmitted back and forth. It sounds like everyone has their position. You know, my position is, is, you know, I'm, I'm a much smaller independent developer, owner, operator of these, of these businesses. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars to me is a substantial amount of money. You know, the, the abutting property, through our investigation, Amazon has, and it was approved for the same setup that Brandon and Dupree has, has, has proposed to us. I mean, that's a fifty-four million dollar, million, over a million square foot development. I mean, it's just kind of hard for me to, to financially swallow an additional hundred thousand dollars when my butter, you know, has, has, has been approved for the same system that I'm applying for. You know, that being said, I, you know, I, I understand that you guys have regulations. I'm not, this is not, non, no disrespect whatsoever, but, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to me is, is a significant amount of money. And it's, you know, I'm making a significant investment in the town and for me to invest an extra hundred thousand dollars when my neighbor has been approved to do that, it's just kind of a hard pill to swallow. So I just wanted to kind of make, you know, you, Kevin, the chair, as well as the board, aware of kind of my position in that, in regard to that, that, that issue.
Thank you, I, I can appreciate your position. I think we, I think we all can. All right, so that, that kind of sums up a little bit about the site plan review and what's going on there and all. So we have multiple other special permits. Why, why don't we talk about hours of operation on the, on the restaurant side of things?
So, so the, the hours of operation restrictions limit the restaurant use to between seven AM and seven PM. And we would be looking for an, an allowed use at twenty-four hours per day, given the location of this site, we don't think that that would really infringe upon any of the surrounding areas, surrounding neighbors or butters. Again, we don't ultimately know exactly what restaurant use is going to be there, but, you know, we don't, we don't want to hamstring the developer in terms of finding a tenant there that may have a desire to operate at twenty-four hours a day. So that would be the, that would be the request that we'd be looking for on that special permit.
So twenty-four hour operation on all the buildings?
Sorry, I don't need to cut you off, and yes, good, good point. It would be on, it would be on all the buildings. There's going to be Dunkin' Donuts in the gas station convenience store, that's going to be proposed to be open twenty-four hours a day, in, in addition to the, the gas station itself, convenience store and the Dunkin' Donuts. But the, what we're showing is, we'll go the middle, middle building or second building, the thirty-five hundred square foot proposed restaurant area. We're asking, be asking for twenty-four hours there. Again, we're not certain in terms of what the use is going to be on the third building, the one all the way to the right on the site plan. So we'd be asking for an allowed use at twenty-four hours there as well.
Okay. And right now, the hours that are permitted up there, seven AM to seven PM?
Correct, and, and certainly having a restriction of having a restaurant closed at, at seven PM, I, I think would really be unattractive to any potential end user there. I'm not saying that every, everyone is necessarily going to want to stay open twenty-four hours a day, but we want to, want to be able to provide the developer with the opportunity to market it to somebody who may want to stay open twenty-four hours a day.
Right. Okay.
Are those our restrictions in STOD or those under general bylaw? Under general zoning?
We, they would be under the table of use, Bob, and we have separate, for different zones, we have separate hours of operation.
I, I, I understand that, but I'm, I'm wondering, I don't remember the STOD specifically limiting seven to seven.
I believe that's on the general bylaw.
Yeah. Hold on, I'll, I'll, I'll look it up.
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
That's all right, I'm, I'm going to look it up right now. Let's see, table of use here.
That's your general bylaw, it's on page fifty-three. Restaurants of twenty-five hundred square feet or greater.
Yeah, yeah.
He asks with a footnote three, hours of operation from seven AM to seven PM?
It's in our zoning bylaw, it's in article eleven. Right? Yeah, article eleven.
Yes, it's in article eleven, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right, that's all right, so yeah, so Bob, if you, if, it's in the, it's in article eleven, it's in our zoning bylaw and he's, he's correct, page fifty-three.
Okay, I just thought we had, we had changed STOD, but yeah, I wasn't thinking for restaurant use, I'm sorry. I know in STOD, we kind of went more towards the industrial districts, industrial zones. I wasn't thinking restaurant.
Can I just, can I just do something real quick?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Because Bob, Bob is, is, is not wrong, I think we're all a little bit right, but in the STOD, there is no for a restaurant of greater than twenty-five hundred square feet. I, I don't think there's an hours of operation up there. We don't have that, no, we don't have that notation there in the STOD.
I would, I would agree that in the overlay district, there's no restriction on hours of operation. I think, I think in some of, and, and please, I don't, I don't want to miss Steve, Brandon or Adam can certainly correct me, I think in some of the back and forth and as part of the, you know, the peer review that's been going on, that may have been one of the things that was pointed out that we needed to get a special permit because we are in the G district in addition to the slate sale, slates, I'm sorry, science and technology overlay district. I think the bylaw states that if there is a conflict between those two provisions, that the overlay district would control.
Correct.
So I, I, if, if this board tells me we don't need that special permit, I've got no problem pulling it back, but I wanted to make certain that we, we ask for everything. If we didn't need it, we can certainly withdraw it. But I.
But I think, I, I think, Tom, to, to your point, because Chris and I had looked at this a little bit and were a little, and I think he said the same thing, that, you know, they wanted to apply for this because the, the underlying is general use, okay. We, we can do that, you know, we don't make a determination whether you need that or not. That's a zoning enforcement official and I'd rather not cross that bounds. What we can do is look at the evidence as presented, which in this case would be presented that our STOD, as voted on at by town meeting and as recommended by the planning board, does not have any hours of operations denoted by any of the activity that is allowed by, either by right or by special permit up there. So without saying, without saying too much, it would appear that what you're asking for by special permit is allowed by right and that you'd probably be successful with the hours of operation on both of those, simply because we've already, you know, we've already said that in our table of use. So I don't want to get into an argument over whether we think you need it or not. If you're going to ask us for it, you've already paid us for it, we've already, you know, advertised it all, we might as well make a ruling on it, and in that decision, we can point out that in fact, the activities that you're applying for and describing under the STOD, which this is within, do not have any hours of operation associated with it.
That's fair.
Okay.
We would agree with that.
So, perfect. So next we have is the, the, the sign, the internally illuminated sign. So that needs a special permit on its own, according to our sign bylaw because it's internally illuminated, right? So, right, so that's another part of our special permit here. Now, where, where are we planning on putting this on? Do we have specific sign specs or a, a, a plan for the sign?
We, we do, it's in the application.
Yeah, I can, I can share that, I had, I got disconnected, so I think I lost sharing privileges, but I can bring those.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
So, so I guess if you just want my concerns on, on, on any of the signage up there, and this went along with what went on with Amazon too, is what, we didn't want these giant signs, you know, that could be seen, keeping in mind, just, just understand this, keeping in mind where you're located, while you're far from the center of town and all, you're on one of the highest places in, in town. And so there is a concern that we're going to do something that would cause some sort of visual impact that could be seen, you know, from far away. So is it the intent of this sign? And again, you said you sent us to the, is it in the application?
Yeah, so I can, I can walk through, I got the plans here. These were submitted with the original application. There's only been one minor update and that was just to fix a typo, but the signage plans by Dion Signs, they cover the three different signs associated with the gas station. So there's a one pylon sign at the northern entrance here and that would be a combined sign with the gas station and the other tenants. And then it just details that any signage on the canopies, the two gas canopies. So like I said, the sign's located right here at the northern entrance. That's what it would look like, it's twenty feet tall. From this point to this point is twelve feet wide, but the cabinet, the actual, you know, display area is eight feet wide. So the, the entire sign is twenty feet tall, but the actual signage, you know, component of it is twelve feet by eight feet, which we're not asking for any relief from the signing, the sign regulations, but that's what it would look like. And then there'd be the canopy signs on each of the gas canopies that are eight feet wide and three feet high. So the only difference is that one says diesel, that's on the, the truck one, that's the southernmost canopy, but that's what the sign would look like.
Okay, do we have any specifics relative to lumens and things? I know you have a rather extensive lighting plan. You know, this is the first public hearing and, and to be fair to most planning board members, they have full-time jobs, they don't have an opportunity like maybe I do, or could be around town as much to see some of this stuff. So they're starting to, even though we've sent it to them, they're starting to get it and digest it now. So, you know, we're not going to be making any decisions tonight. We're just, at this point in time, just getting the general information so that the, the public can hear it, we can hear it, we can go back and look at certain things and then we can start making decisions and giving opinions, I think, at the, at the next public hearing.
Yeah, and just to walk you through here, we also submitted a lighting plan that shows the light locations, this, these are getting updated, but the only thing that are getting changes is some, some of the internal lighting locations and these islands are getting tweaked a little bit, but we'll have those resubmitted. But it shows that there's, you know, little or no spillover, so a little bit of spillover over the property light, the site entrances, just to keep those lit, but that's on the side where there's lighting in Innovation Way anyways.
Yeah.
But this kind of shows the intensity of the lighting, it's, you know, concentrated around the buildings and under the canopies.
Yeah, I mean, keeping in mind again, right, like you see your point, the, the state in conjunction with the town, we wanted an off ramp put in down there so to service these areas, so that's where we want this type of activity. So I, I think the planning board members are acutely, acutely aware of, of, of where this is going and, and what it is. And we'll use that information when we're rendering on dishes, so. Is there anything else that you guys want to add before we, before we move on?
I mean, if we're, if we're sticking with the sign, what do the other special permits have to do with the hours that the sign would be illuminated?
Yeah, and I'm trying to go through, and again, that wouldn't be on our table of use, that's probably, that's probably in the sign bylaw, right?
That is.
Yeah. So again, I, I think, without getting into the too much and, and voting on it, I, I think you see the activity that's up there, you see the activity that we have allowed by right and that we're looking to put up there. I don't want to speak for the board, but I, I, I'll speak for myself. I don't think I'm going to have too much of an issue with having signs at a business that's going to be open twenty-four hours, to be lit for twenty-four hours. That's my own opinion on that. Again, it's on Innovation Way where we already have a twenty-four hour operation, massive building, and we hope that there's going to be more activity down there so that we can increase our catch base.
And, and more to the point, I think it should be concurrent with the hours of operation. So, I mean, if, for whatever reason, they choose to close at midnight to four AM, well, you'll need the signs illuminated if you, if the business, if the businesses are closed. But if they're all, if they're open twenty-four hours a day, I think the sign should be illuminated twenty-four hours a day, that, that would be common sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And specific, your bylaw actually specifically speaks to that point, Mr. Joe's. It's in section eleven twenty D point seven, which deals in illumination. It says that signs can't be illuminated between eleven PM and six AM, except, except for premises that are open for business, but then only upon if this board grants a special permit.
Right.
Obviously, if they weren't open for business, they couldn't be illuminated, but if they are, then we'd be looking for the signs to be illuminated while they're open.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, anything else to, to add to this?
Not, not to the signs, there's one last, one last special permit. It has to do with allowing fuel storage or gas station use. It's a special permit in, in both the general use section of the bylaw and the science and technology overlay district. Obviously, what we're proposing is a gas station use, both for what I call more traditional vehicular traffic and also diesel for truck traffic, which has already been explained in part of the site planner, like, site plan presentation.
Yeah, it's interesting, Tom, because that, that has been a bylaw for ever and ever and ever, right? Gas stations, all weird canopies specifically required special permit, long before we had site plan review and all that other stuff.
Right.
So it's not that we're ignoring that specific special permit application, what, and you touched on a bit. I think we are going to tick all those boxes under site plan review because basically that's what it was when somebody came in for a gas station, not like we got a lot, but it was site plan review, how was the traffic going to work, da, 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 da. And that's really what we're doing under site plan review. You know, we want, and truth be told, we've had plenty of meetings, public hearings on this. We had another gas station here in town, a company come in and want to extend or expand their business at its current location. We denied that permit given its size and location. But we encourage them to look into Innovation Way because that's the type of activity we want. If so, and I know that we, I've sat down and, and you've sat down with other folks here in town, officials here in town. I want to thank you, you know, for, for choosing Free Town, for looking into Free Town, and, and appreciate and look forward to working with you guys going forward on this project. So that being said, if there's, if there's nothing else to, to add tonight, if there's anybody here from the public that has any questions, feel free to, to state it now or ask it now. Again, polite reminder, you, if you hit star six on your phone, then you are unmuted or on your computer screen, I believe there's an unmute button somewhere, or you can, yeah. If not.
Hey, Kevin, this is, this is Nick Giacobi again, I, yeah. I just wanted to thank, thank you as well as the members of the board. Yeah, I've met with, uh, a couple of different individuals throughout the town. Um, and, uh, it's actually been a pleasure. You guys have been, uh, have been a really, um, informative town and, uh, you know, the feedback, um, and, uh, in the, uh, in the, um, uh, the different, uh, points everyone's made has been, uh, has been really appreciated. Yeah. You know, um, you know, we look to really invest in the town. I take a lot, a lot of pride in what I do. This is mine. This isn't somebody I, you know, I'm not building this and leasing this to somebody else. This is mine. You know, I'll be there daily. Um, and I, and I just wanted to, you know, let you know, you know, obviously we're, we're a growing business. But, uh, at the same time, you know, I, I just, this is, um, you know, this is my family's business. This is something that we're growing, um, much like any business in infancy stages, but I take a lot of pride in what we do and, uh, we, we always look to be good neighbors. And, uh, again, I, I appreciate everyone's time and sitting down with us, different, um, uh, different times along the path of this. And, uh, again, I've, I really appreciate it. So.
Well, you're, you're, you're welcome. And, uh, let's just, we'll keep the lines of communication going. We'll keep having these good meetings. And, uh, at the end of the day, hopefully we can, uh, come up with a project that's going to be beneficial for everybody involved. So.
Thank you.
And on that note, um, unless there's anything else imperative, we've got, we've got another thing to get to. And then, uh, so do you anticipate that you'll be ready for the next meeting, uh, which is on the 20th?
I think, uh, I'll defer to Brandon, uh, on that. If there's things that need to get done in between now and then, he's got the heavy lifting to do.
On the, uh, site engineering side, we should be resubmitting D E P G in the next day or two. There was the one thing that we're wrapping up is what Adam brought up about, uh, backing up the system and the resuspension. So we have information on that that we'll be providing and a couple tweaks in design. But other than that, um, you know, short of the offline catchphrase and conversation we had tonight, um, I think we've addressed all their other comments. And I know that the traffic engineer will be responding shortly as well. Uh, I know we had to drop off, but, um, I, you know, I think that we would be ready for the 20th.
Okay. So, I mean, worst case scenario is you, you're not, we just continue again, but I'd rather, you know, I didn't want to put any undue pressure on anybody. Uh, and just from E P G perspective, uh, Adam, you think you'd be able to have comment back to us by the next meeting?
Uh, possibly. Yeah. It depends how soon we get it. And then, um.
Okay.
Yeah, we could potentially, yeah, we need to, uh, make sure that the fee is all set too, but I think, um.
Yeah.
We can sort that all out. Yeah, we can sort that all out. I think it's, it's feasible if we get it very, very soon.
Okay. All right. So, um, if nobody else from the board or from the general public has any other comments, then I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for the, uh, special permit and site plan review associated with the gas station Dunkin' Donuts application for 30 through 36 innovation way. Uh, I'd entertain a motion. We continue that to the, uh, October 20th, six o'clock via Zoom.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and supported. If there's no further discussion on the motion, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Bob, Joe's.
Aye.
Bob, Joe's aye. Jim Freitz.
Aye.
Jim Freitz, aye. Debbie Robbins.
Aye.
Debbie Robbins, aye. Kevin Demaris, aye. It passes unanimously. Okay.
Great.
Thank you, uh, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate, uh, all the good information and look forward to talking to you on the, uh, on the 20th. If there's any other concerns or comments, feel free to reach out to Chris or, uh, or me directly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night. So next on our agenda is a public hearing for consideration for a, a, uh, project at 125 South Main Street, uh, also known as I believe a Sonic Commons. I will call that public hearing back to order. Uh, let the minutes reflect that, uh, planning board member Deborah Robbins will be removing herself from participation in the Zoom meeting as she has a conflict, uh, with this project. That being said, does anybody else have anything before we, uh, open this back up? Perfect. Is Niles here?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you finally came in from playing out in the field.
I did.
All right. Take it away, Niles.
You got it, sir. Uh, for the record now, Zega from Zenith Consulting Engineers, um, if I, I'm going to try to share my screen here. Can you guys?
We have, we have the, we have the plan set. Is that the most recent plan set?
There we go.
You can see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. I think it's just probably good for me to show it so that way you guys, you know, while I'm talking about it. Um, so everybody can see.
Yeah, that's great.
This is, this is the, this is the, uh, the, the most recent plan set that was submitted, um, I believe. Within the last week or so. Um, so the la, the last time we met, which earlier this year, I want to say it was, you know, somewhere in the Feb, in February. If you, if you remember, there, it was a much different layout, um, and still the same use. Seventy-two residential, uh, units. Um, however, um, the layout has completely changed. And that's due to a few different things. One, um, we've eliminated the self-storage facility that was located up in the, uh, northeast corner of the property here. That's now going to be utilized as part of the Village Green area. Um, we've also, basically what's happened is, is, um, my client, um, has, uh, gotten some more information from the modular company that she's planning on using. And, um, the building sizes have changed, layouts have changed. We've decided to actually add garages. Um, to the units, um, feel as though that those will be much better utilized. So, uh, before we had, what we had was these buildings were more angled and the Village Green was more centered in, in between the buildings. Like I said, now it's more in this back up, you know, where the storage facility was here. And the rest of the areas being utilized as parking, uh, either for visitors or for occupants within the garages and park spaces in the front of the buildings. Um, so the, what this is also has done is pulled a lot of the work away from, um, the existing resource areas. Um, as you're aware, there's a, uh, rattlesnake brook runs through the property. Um, and we have tried to mitigate, uh, any impact to that for conservation and other, uh, other purposes. Um, so in doing this, we ended up having to enlarge and the, the size of the modular building increased. So, um, we eliminated that storage facility and we were, what we're proposing now is i- as far as the commercial aspect, as you are aware, this is in the P mud district. Um, so we do have to have some sort of a, um, component of, uh, commercial use. Um, what we're looking to do is we don't want to be specific to one use, but what, what most likely is going to go in here is either a real estate office um, or a hair salon. Um, the applicant has spoken with a few different, um, you know, a few different people and has a few different options. So those is, we, we basically left those open, um, at this point. And obviously be happy to answer any questions that you guys have regarding that. Um, but all that will be, uh, within the exit that, you know, these proposed buildings, um, that we, and we, I believe we've also provided, um, architectural drawings um, to the board for, you know, for your review as well, that will show that area. Um, we have not, we, uh, you know, as you know, we just submitted this about a week ago. So we submitted this, uh, for peer review to E P G, um, have not received, you know, likely so, you know, we have not received any comments back. So tonight we're more just here. Um, because there was such a large change in the, in the layout and the use and just the overall project. Um, we wanted to give you a kind of an update as to where we are, um, and, you know, get any feedback from the board. Um, so if there's no surprises when we meet, once we've addressed any of the E P G concerns that, you know, that may come up. So, um, yeah, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have and, uh, that's it.
You know, Niles, it's interesting because, um, this is the first one of its kind. It's the first, uh, project to utilize the P mud, if I'm not mistaken. Um, but you obviously there at the first public hearing, it was well received, I think, by the board. I think it was well received by the general public that was there and interested parties. Uh, you know, Free Town has been aching for, uh, you know, 55 and older. I'm not going to start going through, uh, all the benefits of it. But, um, I think what's important, given its location, is that you have to make sure you meet that commercial component. It sounds like you're doing that. We need to make sure that that's, that's going to happen too. I guess at the end of the day, the concept, I, I think everybody's in favor of and, and to your point, it's just working out the fine details with environmental partners group to, uh, to come up with the, the finished product for our consideration. So, um, I appreciate the fact that somebody's trying to do this in our town. You know, we create these bylaws to allow the, for this activity. We saw a need with the seniors in town and, you know, hopefully this is something that can, uh, address some of those needs. So. Does anybody from the board have any questions about this?
Just a quick question, of course. I, I always have questions.
That's good.
The businesses, the business that'll be located on, it'll be in the main building and will that be open to general public business? Or is, will that be only business for the residents of the facilities?
It will be open to the public.
So that'll be open to the public. Are you required to have a business on this site? Or can that business be reassigned offsite, um, to another facility for, for another, to another lot under the P mud? We had a, I, the discussion was a while ago, but we had a whole discussion about percentage of use and swapping percentage of use to other parcels. And I, I don't, how is that all working with this?
Well, I mean, I guess it's, it really, what it comes down to is, you know, your board has the right to, to, to grant any waivers or, you know, allow any conditions of that, uh, regulation. Um, so if you wanted it to be on a separate site, I don't know where that would be. Um, you know, I think that where, you know, the intent of the bylaw is to create, you know, a commercial use, and I believe we've done that. Um, you know, is there an allowance for it to be offsite? Um, I guess that, um, that would be completely up to the board's decision at that point.
Yeah. Kevin, you, you know what I'm talking about? We, we had a discussion back when we were doing P mud about, um, ratios and percentages of the district, of the entire district and how much. It was 60, 40, but where that allocation was, one parcel could have more higher than 60 and give up some of its residential to another. Is that all?
Yeah, there would have been, it, it's like offsets, if you will, right?
Right.
I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm not going to lie to you. I'm going to have to go read that section specifically because you're right. I, um, about the percentages and, and.
And I'm not saying necessarily this, this, but it, it, it wouldn't be possible that the applicant could swap with another owner or another owner of the parcel there, so that she doesn't need, or the applicant doesn't need any, um, requirement for commercial on this property and increase somebody, get somebody else's residential and increase somebody else's resident, uh, commercial aspect for their property.
Yeah, I, 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 I understand exactly what you're saying, but it, right now I'm trying to, I'm trying to thumb through the, the, the bylaw specifically. And I'm, I'm not, it's not jumping out at me right away.
Yeah, that's fine. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I, I just, I know you have a better grasp of this whole thing than I.
Yeah, yeah. You're, you're not wrong, but I don't want to, I don't.
It was a whirlwind of, uh, things when we were doing this, the, the P mud. There was a lot of questions, a lot of, we, we had a lot of back and forth. It took a long time. So.
Yeah.
I just want to, hopefully the applicant realizes that there may be potential that they don't have to. If they're feeling this is a requirement because it's P mud, there might be an, another avenue that the applicant could, could follow.
There, yeah, there may, there may be, um, yeah, I'm going to have to go back and look at it. I know that, I know that, um.
Yeah. Uh, I know. That's up, that's up to the applicant. Uh, I wasn't.
Yeah, right.
Um, I just want to make sure the applicant was, was aware of their entire, uh, options.
Yeah.
That, and, uh, and, uh, I will absolutely relay that message to, uh, to my client because it is a good point. And then, uh, Kevin, we can obviously discuss as well. Um, you know, we can, you know, obviously at the next meeting as well. But, uh, discuss any options at that point as well.
And where, where my concern really came from is you're, you're putting 55 and over, which is, I wouldn't say it's a, um, a targeted community, but when you look at crimes in 55 and over have a higher incidence of crime against them than other, and other, um, age groups. So I wouldn't want general public being brought onto the site that, you know, if they didn't need to be, that, that's more my concern. My, my concern is more about a security concern than it is about anything else.
Make, it makes sense. I'll, uh, I'll go back and reread it and see, um, see what I come up with. And if you want to bring that back to your, uh, to the applicant. Um, so page 87. We can do that. All right. Are there any other questions about this? Again, it's just a presentation of the, uh, some of the changes in the concepts.
I just have a question based on this discussion. Is the potential change of use, would that change anything about our review? Or should we continue to proceed with our review?
No, I think the change of use, I think, was thrown around there. And I don't, I don't think there's a change of use. You have a residential component, which is the 55 and over, and you have a commercial component. It's a different commercial use. So yes, the, the mini storage obviously would have a different impact relative, I guess, to say lighting and traffic and, and that. Uh, as compared to, to that, uh, what they're proposing now. But, um, I don't, I don't think it rises to the level that it's a, you know, change of use and it requires a whole new review. No.
No, I guess, uh, I just wanted to be, I would just wasn't sure if there was something that was going to change from what has been submitted in the past week that, uh.
Oh, that's a, that's a, that's a Niles question. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, at this point, we don't plan on changing. Um, you know, if we do, I, I, I guess we'll have to address it at that time. But this is, this is what my, my client has brought to, to the board for review. And, um, you know, if something changes, then obviously we would expect that it would potentially change things a little bit as far as the layout and or, you know, parking. Um, but I, again, at this time, I, this is what we have in front of the board for our discussion.
Okay. And so we'll proceed and review this.
Perfect. Um, okay. So if there's no other questions or comments about this, uh, I keep putting Adam on the spot. Do you, do you both think that you're going to be, uh, ready for the 20th?
I think we will, uh, I'm hoping to get a letter out by the end of next week. That is my internal goal.
Okay.
Those of us working.
And, and, and just like the, the prior folks, if, if we don't have anything in time, then we just continue it till the next time. That's fine.
Is, I mean, in our mind, and I guess it's just going to matter as to the extent of the review and, um, you know, again, we, we provided a response letter to the original and we believe we provided, you know, um, sufficient information, but, you know, there's always something to clean up. So assuming that it's, it's fairly minor. Um, I don't, as to why we wouldn't be able to get that in time for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If there's nothing else, then what I'll do is I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing uh, for 120, it is 125 South Main Street. To October 20th, six o'clock via Zoom.
So moved.
I need a second.
Sorry about that. I kept, I kept touch, trying to get the button. Uh, second.
Thank you, Jim. Motion's made, supported to continue it to the, uh, the 20th at six o'clock via Zoom. Uh, roll call vote. If there's no other discussion on the motion, then a roll call vote. Uh, Bob, Joe's.
Aye.
Bob, Joe's aye. Jim Freitz.
Aye.
Jim Freitz, aye. Kevin Demaris, aye. And, um, Debbie had, uh, like I had mentioned earlier, Debbie had left the meeting. Uh, she's no longer with us. So. All right. So that's continued to the 20th. And so the only thing left on our agenda. So thank you, gentlemen. Niles and, and. Niles and, and Adam, again, thank you very much for playing with us for the last couple of hours.
That's fancy office. Look at the chandelier in that fancy office Niles has.
That's my wife.
That's your wife?
Well, you know what I mean, the decoration.
Oh, I'm like, really? That's not nice to say, I don't think, about your wife, but whatever. I'll, I'll talk to her next time I see her.
Good luck.
I thought you just had an idea. I thought there was a thought cloud above you.
That's it.
All right, so all we have left on the agenda is for any bills or minutes. Yeah, have a good night. Chris, we got any bills or minutes? Chris says we do not have any bills or minutes. So unless there's anything to add from any other board member, thanks for playing. It's been a rather long meeting, but.
Bob has to cut his grass in the backyard over there. It looks really long.
Who's that?
That, that's Portugal, actually. That was the.
That's a long drive to.
Yeah, that's the tea gun.
I, I need a motion to adjourn before we go off the rails, please.
So moved. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and supported. There's no further discussion. Roll call. Bob, Joe's.
Aye.
Aye, Bob, Joe's. Jim Freitz?
Aye.
Jim Freitz, aye. Kevin Damaris, aye. And let's not forget Dave. Dave has been here listening, I think, unless he's, he's been, he's been here. So thank you to our associate member, Dave, for being here. And we'll see you on the 20th, everybody.
Because it's just me and you left, Jim.